CBS 4 Denver Public School Board Election Candidate Forum. I'm Mike Farafino, the President of the Chamber. These elections for our representatives on the school board are critically important for our children's future. CBS 4 is generally offered to livestream this forum on the CBSN platform. Thank you very much. At the Chamber, we know we're at the crossroads of an unprecedented multicultural economic revolution. And currently, our minority communities are representing $5 trillion of buying power. To give you an idea once again how big that is, $5 trillion is the third largest economy in the world. This is critically important. Currently, Denver Public Schools student body is made up of over 75% non-white students. So being able to go through and improve outcomes for our minority students is critical for our current recovery and our future economic development. We believe that engagement and representation is vital for advancing equity in our city and our public schools. As business leaders, the outcomes for our students will determine whether we have the educated workforce we need for our economy today and well into the future. It is my pleasure to introduce CBS anchor Michelle Grego. Michelle herself is a product of Denver Public Schools, and we're so fortunate that after a nine-year stint in San Francisco, she and her family have decided to come back. Michelle, thank you very much for stepping up and agreeing to moderate the forum. We've got a lot to cover tonight, and so from this point on, I just want to say welcome, and I'll let you take over from here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike. And yes, I am a proud graduate of George Washington High School, so I'm excited to be here. I'm also a mother of three, and I think a lot of the questions being asked today are very important for students, their parents, and also the community to hear some of those answers. So thank you for being here as well. Let's just walk through how the night's going to go. Ballots are going to begin arriving as early as this coming weekend, so they must be returned to the Elections Division by 7:00 PM on Election Day, November 2nd. There is great interest in the future of DPS, as you all know. Tonight, we have 12 candidates with us. We're going to divide our conversations with those candidates by region of the city, starting with the at-large race. All voters in Denver will be casting ballots for the school board in the at-large race. We'll then follow with conversations with candidates from Districts 2, 3, and 4. And I'm very happy to collaborate tonight with two journalists well-known to audiences in Denver. Fernando Sergio is the news director and radio host for Radio Que Bueno. Thank you for being here as well. Jesús Sanchez Meléan, he's an editor of a newspaper and a co-owner of the newspaper. He's been working as a journalist in Colorado for the last 10 years. He's also a political scientist and historian, so thank you so much for being here as well. This is the rundown for the evening. Please note, these are estimated times. We know we tend to go a little bit longer, but I'm going to try to keep everybody on track. We're going to try to stick to the timetable as closely as possible because we want to get in as many questions as possible. I'm going to ask the candidates to be very mindful of the time constraints as you respond to these questions, and we want to begin with a quick 30-second round with each of the at-large candidates. So why don't we start? You introduce yourself, and then you'll have 30 seconds to explain why you want to serve on the board.
Hi. Thank you for inviting me here today. My name is Marla Benavides, and I'm running for Denver District School Board at Large because I believe that literacy matters if we want equal opportunity for all students. And my background really quickly is I was a para for Denver Public Schools for two years. I was also a sub for one year, but I have been a homeschool mom for 10 years. I believe that DPS needs a homeschool mom on the board advocating for parents and advocating for teachers and students.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm Jane Shirley, and I'm a career educator, and I also have extensive experience in business and in the arts, and that's a fairly unique skill set. I understand organizations at a system level, and I understand leadership at an executive level. The Denver School Board is a governing board, and I'm interested in bringing my knowledge and skills to that board in service of the youth in Denver Public Schools.
Thank you.
I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this and for having us tonight. I'm thrilled to be here. My name is Scott Esserman. I'm a candidate for Denver Public Schools Board at Large. After 20 years as a union teacher and a father of two DPS students who have taken advantage of both charter schools, innovation schools, and choice schools, I think that my experience provides what this position demands. Nobody knows what's best for the students of Denver like my time in the classroom and elsewhere. I'm running because we have to, as we heard in the introduction, make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students and all of our families, and I'm committed to doing that and look forward to earning your vote on November 2nd.
Scott, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you to the Hispanic Chamber for having us this evening. My name is Vernon Jones, Jr. I'm a proud father of five fabulous students, all who have participated in Denver Public Schools, and they wake me up every morning and remind me why we need to be better for students in our city. Just as we said at the beginning, $5 trillion worth of value in our students, and we need to make sure that we're treating them like that, that we're approaching them like that, and that demands that we have a system that is equitable about wellness, focused on their achievement, and the responsibility by everyone in our city. So glad to be here tonight, looking forward to the conversation.
Vernon, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Yalick. I am running for the at-large position on the Denver School Board to bring my proven commitment and ability in championing strong neighborhood schools for all students regardless of zip code and fighting the privatization of public education to Denver Public Schools. But I'm also running because my partner and I plan on having children as soon as she finishes nursing school. Our children will be mixed-race, and I want them to be educated in a far more equitable DPS. I hope that I can earn your support. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, and nice meeting every single one of you. My first question is for Marla. You describe yourself as a pro-parent candidate, so I want to know, how do you plan to engage families, students, and alumni, particularly those in underserved communities, and elevate their voices in district decisions?
Yes. As a pro-parent, I'm very active in the homeschool community, and I plan to, I have a group called Denver Moms for Liberty on Facebook. I plan to raise that group and advocate for moms and parents and teachers and students and give feedback and updates if elected.
Okay. Thank you. And Scott, my next question is for you. The district recently welcomed a new superintendent. He's very new. What would be your expectation of this superintendent, and what are the qualifiers for success when it comes to this superintendent?
I think that's a great question. I think that my expectations are going to be what comes with being on the board and deciding what that evaluation is going to look like with my board colleagues. I think that that's really critical, is that I can't make that decision myself. And as far as the expectations, there's one thing that we have to do, and we have to educate our students, and we have to do it better for our Black and our Brown communities than we have. And that is the primary measurement of success for him, as far as I'm concerned. Anything beyond that could include what it looks like eliminating discrepancies in gifted and talented education, or what it looks like eliminating discrepancies in our special education programs and how we're serving our special education students. But it's all going to have to come to that, how he's using those resources to fulfill those needs, to make sure that we're serving our students to the best of his ability and our ability. As our only employee of the board is the superintendent, so supervising him is going to be a critical part of this job.
And we are going to be discussing a lot about the discrepancies and about the diversity of the students in Denver Public Schools. I want to kick it over to my colleague Jesús for the next question for Vernon.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Jones, what do you see as your two top priorities if you are elected to the DPS Board?
Thank you for the question. The two top priorities that I see are, one, we are still in a pandemic, right? As much as we are getting comfortable to not having masks on all the time or being able to be social again, we're still in a pandemic, and our schools are still adjusting to that. The wellness of teachers, the wellness of students, the wellness of parents is of the utmost importance. So number one, we need to invest more in wellness. We need to make sure that we have the resources that are available for students and for parents and for teachers to thrive as we come back into the space. I think, secondly, we've got to talk about equity, is equity has got to be our practice, and it cannot be just words that we put on a wall. It's got to be something that we do in practice, that we truly live out the spirit of the Black Excellence Resolution, that we truly live out the spirit of the modified consent decree, that we take care of business and finally deliver what has not been delivered to the Black and Brown students in Denver Public Schools. Thank you.
Vernon, thank you. Jane, my next question is for you. How will you balance the needs and the priorities of a diverse community? This is very diverse. 52% of the student body is Latino. This includes teachers, administrators, families, students, community members. They all have differing opinions, and they all have differing thoughts on what is best for students. How will you balance the needs of all of them?
Well, we don't have a strategic plan right now in the district, and we haven't had one. And when I looked at the Denver 2020 Plan, it listed a lot of activities but no expected results. In my experience, when you work with a community to define the results in service of a shared vision, then you are able to empower that community to determine the resources they need and to have some autonomy in the direction that they need to take to achieve those goals. But without an aligned vision, without clear priorities for how we're going to use our resources and spend our money, we have people moving in multiple directions. So aligning on a vision and developing a strategic plan that has those clear priorities will give communities, schools, the ability to make those decisions at the most local level.
Okay. Jane, thank you. I'm going to kick it over to Fernando right now for the question to Nikki.
Thank you, Michelle. Nikki, what are your thoughts on the current proposed plan to utilize the Federal American Rescue Plan stimulus funding, which DPS is receiving as a result of the pandemic? What would you set as priorities?
Sure. So that's a wonderful question. I very much appreciate it. I think that there's a lot of priorities that we need to be focused on in DPS. We need to be considering the way that the pandemic is affecting our ability to engage, to administer public education, but at the same time, we also need to be not pushing off the major systemic issues that have been facing DPS for decades now. That's something that I'm really focused on. Now, as far as the pandemic specifically, there's a lot of things that we can and should be doing to address learning loss. Some of the things that I've been suggesting throughout my campaign, I think we could be setting up a handful of learning loss centers all throughout the district targeted to the areas of greatest need. I think that we could be using the central administration to offer direct one-on-one tutoring for all the students that need it. I'd like to see, one thing that really hasn't been discussed, in my opinion enough with my last few seconds, is the impact that COVID has had on women and girls in DPS in Denver and all across the planet due to the expectation of childcare. That many young women and girls were forced to forego education, were forced to forego work because they were expected to take care of children in the last year and a half. So I would really like to see us work with co-governors, work with other municipal leaders to improve childcare options, public childcare.
All right. Nikki, thank you. And part of that question, I'm going to kick it over to you, Marla, because I'm just going to read off some statistics to you really quick. In both literacy and math, there were very low participation rates in state assessments during the pandemic in the spring of 2021, with only 46% of required students testing in math, 51% in literacy. In 2021, 22% of students met or exceeded expectations in math, 22%, and 36% met or exceeded expectations in literacy. Those percentages are shocking, and they're low. How do we make that better?
That's a great question, and I'm glad you asked me because my whole platform is on literacy matters. And for the last five years, I've been tracking literacy rates, and these rates have literally not changed. And one of my visions for the board, since we are reimagining, is to reimagine with parents involved. The only way that the board is going to change is by bringing parents into the transformation of DPS, because the vast majority, 85% of all DPS graduates, graduates graduate with reading scores below proficiency. And most of those graduates are Latinos like me. They're graduating functionally illiterate, and my goal is to make sure that they are graduating functionally literate. And the way I'm going to, the way I plan to do that is by decentralizing DPS.
Decentralizing DPS. Can we expand on that a bit?
Okay. So I believe there's a lot of money in our school system, and for the longest time, for over 100 years, our statistics has been dropping. In 1984, they, the US government eliminated across the board phonics. Intensive phonics has not been taught until recently that it's making a comeback. The way I'm going to, I'm going to funnel back the money that's going into the administratives and back into building and back into the schools. Every school should be run independently with principals running the budget and hiring their teachers and their staff. The schools are the closest to the students and the parents, and they should be running and be the focus of transforming DPS.
Scott, I want to ask you the same question. How do we get students where they need to be?
I appreciate the question. There are a number of steps that have to take place, but there are two essential pieces. We know, well, I'm going to call it three essential pieces. We know that, number one, students have to have access to our strongest and our best curriculum in order to get to where they're going. We know that when we remediate students, when we put them in a lower-than-regular class, they don't make progress, and that's where we get a lot of those shocking statistics that you shared. So number one is, we have to provide opportunity and access for all of our students. When I opened Northfield High School, one of the essential parts of the Innovation Plan was ensuring international baccalaureate for all students. That's not what's happened there because there are a lot of societal forces that push back against wanting to know that all of our students can learn, in particular, our Black and Latino students. Second is making sure that they're getting the level of instruction that they need to be able to do that, which means honoring their lived experience, which means honoring their culture. We need more teachers who look like our students. Until we get there, we still have to teach who's here. We can't just wait until that happens. So we have to improve how our teachers are teaching. And finally, with COVID, what our communities and what our students and our families are dealing with socially and emotionally, if we're not addressing their needs, whether that's food, whether that's their social emotional needs, whether that's the trauma informed for the trauma that they've lived through, we can't get to those other two places.
Jane, how would you hold schools accountable for providing quality education for students?
By holding them accountable for quality education on a broad range of measures. Going into schools, it is easy to observe what's happening in the schools. We need to look at the level of work that the children are being given to do. As Scott said, remediating or dumbing down or slowing down doesn't work. We need to assess the experience level of the teachers in the building. If you have a building that has a lot of inexperienced teachers, that building needs to have more support. They may need to have more time set aside for teachers to develop the skills and strategies, and they may need some temporary support of expert teachers to assist in that. We are currently budgeting on, you know, factors around how many students and not what the actual needs are. So test scores give us one small data point, but that has to be correlated with all the other factors that are going on. If there's been a big turnover in the school, if there's been a leadership change, things that have happened in the community, all of those contexts have to be taken into account when we consider the needs of the schools and the resources that we are providing to them.
Vernon, I want to ask you, but I want to give you a few numbers. You already know these numbers, though, all of the candidates do. But 52% of the students are Hispanic, 52%. 26% are white, 14% are African-American, 8% identify as other. What does equity mean to you, and what are some of the major obstacles you see to ensuring students in Denver are receiving an equitable education?
Yes, thank you for that question. I think it begins with all the questions you just asked, that let's get to the root of the problem. I believe that the reason why we struggle with equity is because we struggle with equality still. When I was working at Manuel High School, serving there, and they reopened, we reopened the school, what we understood there was that people did not see, and they still don't, they did not see every campus and every child as an equal human. Because if they did, they would act equitably, and we have to own that that's what's going on in our system, is that certain schools have certain things, certain schools have certain teachers, certain schools get these resources, because there's a problem still with equality. They don't look at Black and Brown kids. They don't see the $5 trillion. They don't see the potential of our people, because when you see our greatness, when you see our brilliance, you teach us differently, you inspire us differently, you support us differently. So equity to me is first, seeing that child as an equal human, seeing that parent as an equal human, and then approaching them in an equitable way that says, let me dialogue with you, let me develop a relationship with you, and let me find out how you want to be served, how you need to be served, versus what the system has done is doing to us and dictating to us and not meeting us at our point of need. So it starts with me with equal humanity, and then when we get there and we see every child as a brilliant child, every family is a brilliant family, we will act more equitably. But until then, we're going to struggle.
Nikki, I want to ask you the same question. What does equity mean to you, and how can you assure students in Denver are receiving an equitable education?
Yes, ma'am. I very much appreciate the question. I believe that we need to very clearly define equity, and to me, equity is quite simply ensuring that we serve every single student in Denver Public Schools to their unique needs in the long-term goal of preparing them for their unique version of success in adulthood. Now, what does that mean as far as Denver Public Schools? Number one, on a broader level, I think for far too long, we've essentially been playing whack-a-mole with equity. We wait until the problem gets so bad that, you know, it's just exploding, that everyone's talking about it for years and years, and then we finally decide to address it. We need to stop doing that. We need to have plans for equity for every underserved group of students in DPS. Now, I focus on three major groups: seeking Black excellence, making sure that our English-language learners are served, and special education students. The Black Excellence Resolution was a wonderful idea, but we need better central direction, stronger central direction from administration to ensure that every school has a unique plan for how they're going to work toward that for their students. We need to fulfill the mandate of the consent decree, finally, for our English-language learners, and we need to stop paying out at least hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in noncompliance lawsuits for our special education students. We need to stop punishing our educators and our support staffers when they advocate for their needs of their special education students, and we need to find the money. The money's there. We need to find the money to serve our students better.
Something that's been talked about in the news and in the community is recently what happened with Tay Anderson. The Denver School Board voted to censure Tay Anderson. The vote comes after the board commissioned an investigation, of course, that found he acted inappropriately by texting with students. Some in the community say it was barely a slap on the wrist, others in the community support him. Do you think that was handled correctly, and if not, how would you have handled it? I'll start with you.
I'm officially a certified paralegal, and if I were on the board and read the entire investigation, I would know exactly what he did. And if there is any inch, if there is a reasonable doubt, I would have held him to the standard of a reasonable doubt, not a preponderance of an evidence, because we women have come from a long line of abuses, and we need to take these things serious. And he should be censored, not censured, from dealing with students if he did anything wrong.
Jane, I want to ask you the same question. Do you think it was handled well, and if not, how would you have handled it differently?
Well, hindsight's 2020. So when I look at the situation, I look at how it got to be that way, and the board was lacking code of conduct, they were lacking, seemed to be lacking some agreements, they seemed to be lacking some communication mechanisms to address things. When I watched the board meeting where they announced the censure, they were discussing things that seemed to be outside of or in addition to the investigation. Those are the kinds of things that first you have agreements on how we're going to work together and how we're going to communicate with each other, and then you address things the moment that they need to be addressed. You know, I say you tell the truth as fast as you can. I'm not sure what the value is at this point. We have a division, and I'm not seeing a path toward healing. I'm seeing this side over here and that side over there and both digging in. We need to be clear on what it is that's expected, and if there's a step outside or something gets missed, we need to have a mechanism to address it. And if I was on the board, that would be the place that I would be working is, what happened? How did it impact us, and what do we need to do to move forward?
It is a divisive issue, and Scott, how do we bridge that divide?
I think that the best way in which we bridge that divide is by actually implementing the restorative practices that the district has said that they're committing to, and that at times Director Anderson has asked for, and that I know that at times he's starting to work with his colleagues to work that out. But there's a need to actually stop looking at things as how do we punish students, right? It's part of the culture of the entire district, is we're focused on punishment rather than on restoration. So if we're going to bridge the divide, we have to talk to each other, and we have to listen to each other, and not from a polarized place, right? I think there's an essential element here where Director Anderson serves as a lightning rod for the community and is loud and is outspoken, and we have to examine the historical nature of what happens to that sort of leader at this point in their career. At the end of the day, bridging the divide means, how do we engage in true restorative conversations? How do we identify who has been harmed and how we repair those harms?
Vernon, how do we bridge that divide, and would you have handled it differently or the same?
Yes. So, and I don't know if that's going to come up, CRT, I joke with CRT, and I use the acronym, change requires truth, right? Everybody wants to say critical race three, but I want to say change requires truth. And I think if we are going to be the district that's going to serve 92,000 children well, and we are going to keep the focus on them, change requires truth. I love what Jane just said, tell the truth as fast as you can, right? That has got to be our commitment. We got to tell the truth about the data, we got to tell the truth about what has happened and what hasn't happened, we got to tell the truth about the Bailey Report being ignored, we got to tell the truth about the Bailey Resolution in 1995 being ignored, we got to tell the truth about how teachers are treated, how sped students are not being served well. We've got to tell the truth, or we're not going to change. And that's every issue. That's applicable to this issue that we're speaking about and everything the district is facing, from literacy rates to overpolicing to safety in our schools. We've got to begin with the truth, and I think if you begin with the truth, you spend less money on investigations. You don't waste resources on things that don't help us get to what the vision of Denver Public Schools is. It's not about one director. It's about 92,000 kids, and that's what we have to stay focused on.
It is about 92,000 kids, but I want to push back a little bit on that and get an answer because that is somebody who is in charge of these 92,000 students. And so when the investigation results came out and he was punished in a way, do you agree with that, and would you have done it differently?
If I was sitting on the board as they did the 6-1 vote, I probably would, I would have agreed with the censure, right? I don't necessarily agree with the process, right? There were some things that just didn't set well, and again, if we began in a place of truth, where we are being honest and transparent, where there are not these attacks, there's not these undermining things that go on within this district for Black school leaders, Black teachers, Black board members, I think we get to a different place. So the board landed where they landed. They do have a code of conduct that they decided this violated, so they landed where they landed. And based on what that code of conduct says, probably would have landed in the same place.
And Nikki, I want to ask you the same question as well.
Sure. I appreciate the question. I believe that the Denver School Board did essentially what they had to do within their limited capacity, their limited power in this matter. I tend to agree with Director Brad Lorbach, what he said during the meeting when the vote was taken. I think we were all relieved that the most serious allegations were not substantiated in the report. However, I think that we've all witnessed a certain amount of, some concerning things, and I think that there's a certain level of expectation for public officials when it comes to decorum, inclusivity, such things. A line was crossed, as Director Lorbach said, and the board needed to take some kind of action to say that. I will say, I have been very concerned about what I've seen as the vilification of a great deal, a great number of DPS students who spoke out for accountability. Some students may have, may have taken it a little bit too far, but at the end of the day, they were speaking out about their safety, and I think that their voices should have been respected far more than they were. As far as As far as the next steps for this, I mean, really, when it comes to just about everything in Denver Public Schools, we just need to become so much more ensconced in community than we have been and that we currently are. If we're going to change, if we're going to change the culture, if we're going to gain ground in any of these major issues, then we need to totally turn around the way that we engage community by actually doing it for real, authentically and as deeply as possible.
Thank you, all of you, for answering that question. Another question I want to ask is, how would you guide the district in balancing students' academic needs and mental health needs? We've learned a lot about mental health in just the last year and a half when it comes to students, and also ensure resources are there to address both. I'll start with you, Marla.
Okay, so this is a good question also. Because of literacy, the literacy problem in this country, we have a moral problem in this country. Our founding fathers, and I'm going to quote really quickly from Samuel Adams' Letter to James Warren, February 12, 1779, he said, "If virtue and knowledge are diffused among people, they will never be enslaved. They will be their, this will be their great security." Meaning, our founding fathers believed that it was a moral obligation of parents to raise their kids in the way they should go. They never thought to let go of, they never thought to let go of the Bible from schools. This, I'm going to read one more thing. If it is from James Wilson Lecture on Law, 1791, "It is the duty of parents to maintain their children decently and according to their circumstances, to protect them according to the dictates of prudence, and to educate them according to the suggestions of a judicious and zealous regard for their usefulness, their respectability, and their happiness. It is crucial that parents make a comeback into our schools, and the Bible needs to be introduced to children at a very early age, because it is a Bible that is going to raise our children in a free society. And if we want to continue being free, we must, we must raise them with morality. Morality and the Bible are truths that need to go together. And if we are going to change the dynamic for mental health, we need to raise children that are morally upright, and that means in bringing back the Bible into America, because America is a free country."
I do want to ask a follow-up question on that and just give a quick response. What about people who do not believe in the Bible?
You see, that is why we need to decentralize DPS, because every family, every parent has a fantastic, a fantastic moral upbringing and value system, and every school and every community is, has a fantastic demographics of parents. And so we need to put back, give back the schools their independence, and the board needs to be held accountable for the standards that they have set, not the teachers. It is the board that has set the standard for curriculums, and it should be the schools with the parents and the teachers that set the curriculum for the students.
Marla, thank you. I do want to give each candidate an extra 20 seconds because I want to ask you the same thing. I think mental health and academic needs are so important when we're talking about students here, especially in the last year and a half. So Jane, I will ask you, how do you ensure resources are there to address both for the students?
You know, one of the first things I learned in my undergraduate teacher education courses was Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, and that, you know, if we don't take care of students' needs, they're not in a place where they can learn. And the well-being of our children should be the first indicator that we look at, how are our children? And you can see that on their faces, you can see that through their physical interactions, you can observe them in a school. How to ensure that is, we have to understand what the current reality is in our schools. I've worked closely with some schools, I worked with one school at their opening, and they had students with such significant challenges, and the school principal was calling the district office, asking for help, and nothing came. They were just given, hey, you should get your, you know, clothespin clip thing in place, with no clue of the significance of what the teachers and the principal were dealing with. So having the ability to assess what those needs are and being okay with focusing on that, it's not at the expense of literacy or at the expense of them learning math, it's taking care of the child, it's equity. What does this child need right now, and how do we provide that? And that is giving the professional educators the autonomy to make those kind of decisions and access the monetary and people resources they need.
Scott, let me ask you.
We repeat the question.
Yes, I will. How would you guide the district in balancing students' academic needs and mental health needs and ensuring the resources are there to address both?
I think there are so many levels to that question. So one is that we had those social, emotional, and academic needs prior to the pandemic, and the pandemic has exacerbated those needs across the board. I like to say that COVID has made everything just more so than it was before. So one thing that we know is, there was a question earlier about the funds, the federal funds that come in, the Esther Funds and the ARP Funds, and a lot of those have been designated specifically to balance those needs, and we're facing some issues right now in terms of being able to find enough qualified people to come in the classrooms. I'm talking to principals, I'm talking to teachers, I'm talking to parents about the fact that they can't fill the positions that are currently being funded, which is a problem. We're missing paraprofessionals, we're missing nurses, we're missing those additional social, emotional supports, and we have to try and figure out what we're going to do to find those. That would be one of the first things I'd need to do on the board. In terms of truly balancing those two needs, one is, the Black Panther Party told us, children can't learn if they don't have food in their bellies and they don't have shoes on their feet. But we also know, a significant element of my campaign is about a National Education Association Community School model. And a community school model starts with an annual assessment of each school. So part of how we find that balance is we check in with community. Which school communities are suffering with more food insecurity? And then how do we then get to the academics as well? We have to provide for that food insecurity, and then the other pieces that I've talked about in terms of academics.
Thank you. Vernon, I want to ask you the same question. How do you ensure resources are there to address both?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I want, again, to say, we live in a structure that says, get the academic outcomes at whatever cost, right? They have laid teachers burnt out, they have laid kids frustrated, they have laid parents frustrated with latticants every new math thing that we've had to learn, right? Because what we've done is we created a system where it says academics and wellness are separated, right? And that's not who we are as human beings, right? We are total human beings, and so the whole approach should be about total wellness. And when we talk about our campaign, we talk about equity and wellness. And then as you are treating kids equitably and wellness is a baseline expectation, you will see the outcomes that those children and their communities want. We have to prioritize equity, we have to prioritize wellness, and then say, the outcomes will come. Right now, we're looking, I work with counselors, right now in the schools that I work with, who are looking at counseling ratios of 250 to 1, right? 300 to 1, 400 to 1 in some of our high schools. So if we're really committed about wellness, the numbers don't say that we are, right? But you talk about how many folks we got to help with test prep and all this kind of stuff, we have the wrong priorities. And so, lastly, my campaign says, we've got to be responsible, not just as a district, but as a city. If we are the great Mile High City, everybody's got to step up, and every resource within this city has got to be made available to ensure the wellness of our children, period.
Vernon, thank you. Nikki, I want to ask you the same question as well. I'll ask it again in full. How would you guide the district in balancing students' academic needs and mental health needs and then ensuring that there are resources to address both?
Sure. So there's two areas that I want to really focus on in this question. Number one for me, what I've been talking about a lot throughout this campaign is the general over-standardization of public education, DPS and all over the country. And when I talk about that, yes, of course, standardized testing is the first thing that we think of, but I'm not only talking about standardized testing. I've been working with a committee of current and former DPS educators since January, asking them to lead the process of redesigning several aspects of DPS. And in talking with them and other educators in DPS, we're pushing higher and higher expectations on lower and lower grades. We're taking all the joy out of learning, we're taking all the engagement out of learning. It's just about listening and taking tests. And that's having a significant impact on our students' social and emotional experience in Denver Public Schools. So one thing that I would like to see us do, as far as really putting educators in the lead, I think that educators should be leading the process of redesigning a lot of our systems in DPS, redesigning curriculums, so that we make learning more hands-on, more engaged, see what we can do to really focus on things like expeditionary learning, student travel. And the other thing I'd like to just touch on, you know, I talk a lot about community-based decision-making, and as far as it relates to this specific question, I just want to address the last 18 months, I've been a huge advocate of a pandemic pod program, like what Adams 12 did, comprehensively offered to every single student in the district that would basically have a go-between in terms of not just jumping between remote and in-person learning that was horrible for everyone, parents and teachers and students, but having this interim option that gives students that social, emotional ability. And I know I'm passing my time, but it lets them be there with their kids, with a small, safe group, to get all those experiences at the same time.
Well, we have just a few minutes, so I want to get this question out, but I want to read this to you. District-wide enrollment declined over 3% in one year from 2019 to 2020, 2019, 2020 to 2020, 21, lots of numbers there, with the most acute drops in preschool and kindergarten. Fewer students switched schools within DPS in between public Colorado school districts compared to previous years, but significantly more students switched from DPS to private or homeschool options compared to previous years. You talk to a lot of students, and they cite the pandemic as the problem, and homeschooling just didn't work out for many families within the Denver Public School District. How do you ensure, and I want to go through everyone, but just real quick answers, how do you ensure if there is another surge with the Delta variant and students are left schooling from home, this doesn't happen again?
Well, number one, we live in America, and we live in a constitutional republic, okay? Regardless of whatever pandemic there is, and if we want parents to return to our schools, we need to have, we need to give them the personal freedom to decide what's best for their interest. It is not our job to take care of each and every parent. It is our job to educate our students and to make sure that these kids are getting a true education, because the truth of the matter is, the truth of the matter is, public schools are a fraudulent piece of goods sold to the public at a high cost. A student whose life has been ruined by educational malpractice has no recourse in the law.
Okay, Marla, thank you. Jane, I want to ask you the same question. We only have a couple minutes left.
Okay. Just based on my observations, and then I work pretty closely with several DPS principals, one of the things that I think was a huge flaw was the lack of communication mechanisms, that the communication was primarily one way from central office to schools, and it wasn't responsive and it wasn't consistent, and the schools were not getting what they needed. To be able to put into place ways in which schools can access the resources they need in real time and make decisions for their school community based on what their parents are, you know, telling them they need, will take us a long way towards improving some of the challenges we had. Scott?
I'd say that ensuring that means planning, and it means planning for the possibility of that occurring. So we watched as many students didn't have devices when we sent everybody home last March. And so the district went to extreme lengths to acquire and to redistribute devices that they had so that every student had one. After many years of not being able to say, oh, we have enough resources to do this, we do. So we have to plan, and we have to talk to communities about what they need in order to make that work, and then we need to be able to implement that, and we need to be able to make that work. I would say that it's been impressive that at this point in the school year, the schools have remained open, right? That the mask mandates have helped those schools remain open, and that we've learned a lot about what we need to do in order to be able to keep the schools open, keep the kids in school, and keep them learning.
Thank you, Scott. Vernon?
Yeah, the schools have remained open, but working in them every day, I'm telling you, folks are tired. We have substitute shortages, eight teachers out in your building, no substitutes called, right? So we're stressed, right? We're struggling. We have to make sure that we're planning for rain. My grandfather would always keep an umbrella in his car, no matter what the weather looked like. I said, Grandpa, why you got an umbrella in your car? You never know when it's going to rain, right? But he was always prepared. We have to be prepared. We understand, we're starting to understand the variant, we're starting to understand what this might look like, we're starting to understand we might see peak in November and December. Well, what is the plan right now for adjusting our calendar? We so much want to go back to normal, right? But we have to embrace that things have changed, and we've got, again, change requires truth. And so we've got to be willing to look at the truth and say, COVID has disrupted things in some ways horribly, but in other ways it has opened our eyes, to Scott's point about technology gap and all that. We've solved some of the problems that we were dealing with pre-COVID. Now we've got to continue to use those tools instead of just recoiling all the way back to like it didn't happen. It's still happening, we've got to be prepared.
Vernon, thank you. Nikki?
While I completely appreciate that nobody could have seen this pandemic, this disaster coming, I was very disappointed from the beginning with the quality of community engagement that DPS engaged in. I believe that if you're an elected official, if you're a public official and a community-wide disaster strikes, the first thing that you should do, the number one thing in your standard operating procedure, should be you bring the community together and you say, how are we going to figure this out? How are we going to solve this? We had everyone from the top to the bottom of our elected leadership throughout 2020 saying to us, we are all in this together, and yet it seemed like they were expecting us to act that way while they weren't often doing that. And I'm really not just putting this on the DPS board. I mean, this was a shortcoming of leadership all across the country. And so in answering that question, I want to see us go directly to the community. We should have done this all along, and there's still ample opportunity to do this. Let's bring everyone together, let's be absolutely inclusive and leave no one out. As for creative solutions, thank you very much.
Okay, I want to thank each and every one of you. These are your candidates in the at-large race. Marla Benavides, Jane Shirley, Scott Esserman, Vernon Jones Jr., and Nikki Yalick. Again, thank you for being with us, and we're going to take a quick break as we get ready for our next forum.